Colleagues, we'll be starting in just a few moments. Colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the 21st meeting of City Council. This is a virtual meeting during the COVID-19 emergency City Hall. Those open to the public with reduced capacity and physical distancing requirements. Meetings can be viewed via live streaming on YouTube and the city website. The City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council standing or advisory committee meetings and information upon request. To make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519 661 2489 extension 2425. I'll look for any disclosures, please, of pecuniary interest. Councillor Turner.
I thank you, Your Worship, with respect to the 18th meeting in the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. As the budget was tabled, any item, budgetary item regarding the Middlesex London Health Unit as an employer, employee of that organization, and any item pertaining to funding for the early on program, as my spouse is an employee of the organization, that is dependent on that funding.
So noted, thanks very much. Any other declarations? Seeing none, thank you. I'm going to turn your attention, colleagues, to item two, 2.1, which are recognitions. I'm going to start, if I might, please, with Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. Colleagues, I know that all of us regularly extend thanks to our staff for the work they do, and especially for going the extra mile they have to during the COVID-19 pandemic. I want to take this opportunity to thank a particular group of staff who are out on the front lines right now in our community, and those are the staff who are supervising our community centers, arenas, and aquatic facilities. Last Sunday night, I had the opportunity to have an evening ice rental at the Argyle Arena, and from the moment we arrived until the moment we left, from the screening and the contact tracing done at the front door, to the cleaning of surfaces regularly, the staff at Argyle Arena were right on top of all the COVID protocols for community safety. So I want to especially thank them, and I also want to thank the staff at all of our facilities across the city for doing their part to ensure that Londoners can continue to use these community spaces responsibly during this pandemic situation.
Thank you very much, and colleagues, I have a recognition to make, if I can, please. As this is the final meeting of council before his term as Deputy Mayor comes to an end, I wanted to take this opportunity to say a few words about our friend and colleague, Jesse Helmer. In the two years I've worked with Jesse, I've come to regard him as a confidant, a trusted advisor, someone with great political awareness, and just an abundance of common sense. Nobody could have asked for more from a deputy mayor. He's brought intelligence, integrity, and compassion to the role during his term, while showing tremendous leadership throughout the course of several landmark events, most notably the Woodman Avenue explosion and the COVID-19 pandemic. I deeply appreciate it and benefit from both his leadership and his friendship. In thanking Jesse, it's equally important to acknowledge his amazing family for their outstanding impact on all aspects of his life, and also for being so willing to share Jesse, as it were, in his role as deputy mayor. I benefited immensely from this, and I believe so too has the City of London. Special recognition is owed to his brilliant wife Kate and baby daughter Flora, perhaps named actually after that famous conservative stalwart Flora McDonald, we'll never know. But to Kate, and more recently to Flora, thanks to both of you for the love and support you provided to Jesse, because it's your commitment as well, and particularly for your patience. I'm sure it's not always easy, but I can assure you, from all of us at City Council, it's deeply appreciated. So to Jesse Helmer, to your family, thank you. As I've said before, Jesse, you are someone who leads both with your head and your heart. You are a model for anyone who aspires to one day serve on behalf of their fellow citizens, and we honor you and we thank you. And as a small tribute to Jesse for the two years that he served as deputy mayor, I'm pleased to present this personal plaque to him, and I'd like to hand it to you almost virtually, because as I hand it to you, I'll ask you to watch your screens and see the magic of television. Jesse, to you, my friend. And Jesse, perhaps a few comments if you'd like. We'd certainly respect that as well.
Well, thank you, and I'm happy we got it right on the first take. Thank you very much, Mayor Holder, and I do want to just say a couple of things. I promise not to go on for too long. One is, I remember when you first asked me to take on the role of deputy mayor, I wasn't so sure, and I think I said at the time that, you know, I'm going to do all the same stuff if I'm a councillor, as if I'm deputy mayor. And I want to say, you know, I was wrong about that, and I have had some opportunities as deputy mayor that just wouldn't have come along if I was a councillor, and I have a new appreciation for the work that Deputy Mayor Hubert and Deputy Mayor Cassidy did in my first term at council, the kind of challenges that come from being deputy mayor, and it certainly was a wonderful opportunity for me. I think I learned a lot working with you, and I think we have shown that although we often do not agree on issues, I think even as recently as this morning, you said to me, "I 100% disagree with you," during a discussion we were having, that we can find common ground on a lot of issues, and that it's really council as a team and the City of London as a team, working with the community, that we get stuff done, and I think we've had a pretty good go at it the last couple of years. I want to say a couple of things. First, a thank you to city staff who have been supporting me and working with me probably more closely than you would have liked over the last couple of years. I thought we had a lot of meetings before, but we certainly have had a lot more over the last couple of years, and I want to thank you for the work that you do every day. I have a bit better appreciation for how challenging it can be, and I just wanted to say thanks very much, especially to our two city managers, Martin Hayward, who was there at the beginning, and Lynn, who has taken over this last little while, basically her entire time during the pandemic. I want to say thanks to council, because I've seen a lot of great things from my colleagues over the last couple of years. I think many of the new councillors who came in in their first term are really finding their stride and getting a lot of things done, and I'm hopeful that as a group, you know, the best is yet to come for us as a council, and I hope that we can work even better together in the future than we have up to this point. I want to say about the mayor, you know, one of the things that's been great about being deputy mayor is being able to see just how well the mayor represents the city outside of London, and, you know, the mayor's got to do lots of different things, there's different ways that mayors lead in the community, but one of them is dealing with the province and dealing with the federal government, and whether it's the funding for transit, the supervised consumption service, the business education tax, the safe restart funding, which was critically important, and getting the fiscal situation of the city stabilized. Mayor, you have done a really good job of getting what we need from the province and the federal government, and not being shy about being clear about what London needs and what our problems are. And I wanted to say, it has been really a pleasure to work with you, especially on those files, trying to get those things done to find some common ground to actually move things forward. And I can tell you that the mayor, I don't know, maybe sometimes he seems tough, but he's really a softie when you get down to it, and he cares deeply about people, and that has become very clear to me over the last couple of years. And I want to say thanks very much for the recognition, I think it's very nice. I will do my best to try and support everybody as I'm stepping down as deputy mayor and going back to being just a word-for-word councillor. I look forward to seeing what Councillor Morgan can do in the deputy mayor role, I'm pretty confident he's going to do very well. And I want to say, you know, it really is a team effort, and I appreciate the recognition from the mayor, but, you know, if anything good has happened that I've been involved in, it's been because of other people who have also been involved, and I certainly feel that more two years in than I had before, so thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I might mention that Councillor Morgan was hoping to be here for this specific portion, but he's dealing actually right now with FCM matters till about 4:30, but he wanted to pass on his very thoughtful and warm regards to you as well. So colleagues, there's a final recognition, and it's my honour and privilege to present to you tonight, and it's on behalf of all of us at City Council that I'd like to personally acknowledge and thank the more than 60 individuals we are recognizing tonight. These are staff members of the City of London, and I want to say thank you for all the hours, all the care, all the service you've devoted to your fellow Londoners over these last 25 years, and especially this year. Your passion, your dedication, and your expertise, those qualities and your love for London have helped grow this city into what it is today, and have also sustained us through the unprecedented challenge that is COVID-19. I know the work can seem thankless at times, underappreciated, or underrecognized by those you serve, but it's why occasions such as this are so important, because your contributions are so important. So, on behalf of London City Council, thank you so much for what you've done, and lest we forget about this, what you still will be doing with and for us. So what I'd like to do is share the names of the individuals who we are recognizing tonight. As you know, by virtue of COVID, we don't have a reception, we don't have that get-together that we have enjoyed in the past, and we don't have Human Resources handing out free drink tickets, but maybe we can impose on them at another time at another place. So, from, for 25 years of service to our city, from the city manager's office, Karen Summers, from environmental and engineering services, Grace Maquin Tanai, Don Bordeniuk, Rob Bernard, Gary Burrows, Anthony Joseph Kritsch, Todd Hayder, Robert Joliffe, Antonio Lima, Gary Maderos, Barry Orr, Marcus Sham, Jay Stanford, Paul Titus, Adrian Trotman, Tim Vanderbeet, James Woolford, Alan Zierl, from finance and corporate services, Rose Din, Judy Golynowski, Joanna Wozniak, Kathleen Beamish, Maria Irene Chavez, Lisa Galbreath, Diane Glont, Karen Grealis, Candy Johnson, Shirley Locke, Melda Mantis Fanyai, Beth Resi, Leonore Tavardes, Heather Trevithick, from our London Fire Department and Neighborhood Children and Fire Services, Stephen Charles Beasley, Sean Thomas Spencer Beer, Carl Britton, Craig Brown, Jade Callaway, Douglas Ferguson, Stephen Garrett, Andrew Joyce, Richard Kerr, Greg Knight, Tim Knight, Richard Coning, Matthew Lane, Scott McKenzie, Dan McNeil, Brent Moore, Jamie Nardachiot, Nardachioni, excuse me, Jamie, Mark Peg, John Peter, Paul Prouse, Stephen Redoa, Terry Taylor, and from our London Police Service, John Scott Ashley, William Berg, Mark Bogner, Matt Garwood, Dan McCoy, Alcindor Pierre, Dion Skelton, Ross Sutherland, Trevor Tether, and William Tennant. Ladies and gentlemen, those are the 60 individuals that we are recognizing tonight for 25 years' service, and council colleagues, I know you'll join me in acknowledging and thanking them for their great service to our city for these first 25 years. Thank you. I will tell you, colleagues, the clerk offered to read all the names, and I said, "Ah, how hard can that be?" Clerk, you have a job next time, I got to tell you. Thank you very much, and thank you for your help on that as well. I am not aware of any confidential matters to be considered in public, but colleagues, I'm going to look for a change in order motion so that we can move item four in closed session, the items in closed session in 18th Report of Council, to after stage 13 bylaws. Do I have a mover for that, please? Councillor Ben Mirberg, and seconded by Councillor Hillier. I'll call the vote if I could, please.
Councillor Helmer?
I'll vote manually yes.
Closing the vote, and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Colleagues, I can put the motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held on November 10th, 2020, on the floor. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Turner, seconded by Councillor Cassidy. Any discussion? Then we'll call the vote.
Councillor Kaiba? Closing the vote, and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Thanks, colleagues. Turning to communications and petitions, there are three communications related to item 732, 73.2 of the 18th Report of the Planning Environment Committee, related to the proposed amendments to the tree protection bylaw. I'll look for a motion to refer them, those items, to the appropriate place in the agenda. Do I have a mover for that, please? Councillor Kaiba, seconded by Councillor Turner. Any discussion? Then we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Thanks very much. Colleagues, there are no motions of which notice has been given, so with that, I'm going to turn to item eight, the reports, the 18th Report of the Planning Environment Committee. Councillor Cassidy, if you please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have been asked to pull item 3.2 from the committee report, which is number seven on the council agenda, and that is all that I am aware of. I don't know of any other items that, if other people would like something pulled.
Does anyone like any other item dealt separately? Councillor Lewis.
Your Worship, just a point of clarification, on the clerk's note in the agenda, a motion of reconsideration is noted on item eight, I'm wondering if we have to deal with that separately, as that would require the two-thirds vote.
Let's ask the clerk on that.
Yes, Your Worship, thank you for that catch.
Councillor Cassidy?
Yes, thank you for that catch, so I'll pull that item as well.
So noted.
And everything else on the floor.
Okay, any other items, colleagues? Seeing none. Any comments and discussions on any items, with the exception of items seven or eight? And eight. Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Councillor Van Holst? Closing the vote, and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy.
So I will put item seven, which is 3.2, from the committee report, and it is the proposed City of London Tree Protection Bylaw. It was Councillor Lewis that asked me to pull that.
Do you want to start us off, then, Councillor Lewis?
Thank you, Your Worship. I would like to start us off. The reason I asked for this one pulled is because I want to be able to vote on the component parts separately, and particularly part B, because that committee, the committee members did approve an amendment to the staff recommendation, asking for a business case to reduce the protection size from 50 centimeters to 40 centimeters for the 2022 annual budget update. Through you to staff, I have some questions about this, and so with your indulgence, I'd like to see if some of our staff members can answer these questions for me, and so I first want to ask if we have a sense of whether or not there's a particular epidemic in the City of, you know, trees in that 40 to 50-centimeter range being cut down. I understand that development, things like new subdivisions and things like that are managed through site plan and not the permit process, so with individual homeowners, is there some, you know, burning need for this to come forward? And when homeowners do apply for a permit, what are the general reasons we see for those permits being required? And when homeowners do apply for a permit, what are the general reasons we see for those permits being requested?
Ms. Shear?
Thank you, Your Worship. We don't track any statistics below the 50 centimeters. We do track increase in overall canopy cover, which is growing as both a part of retention and new planting. Generally speaking, when a homeowner calls about a tree removal, there's usually three reasons. One of them is conflict with planned renovations or landscaping project. One of them is a tree is a nuisance tree. It's creating a lot of suckers or dropping a lot of fruit, and they don't enjoy the cleanup or the wasps. And the most common one by far is that the tree is at end-of-life span, and they're concerned about its age. We generally do not get a lot of voluntarily reported by neighbors concerns about smaller trees being removed. But we don't have a specific number with respect to what would be in that 40 to 50 area that people might be interested in removing.
Counselor Lewis?
Thank you for that. So do we have a sense, through you, does our staff have numbers on whether most permits are typically approved or denied? Do we have some sense of what those statistics look like?
Ms. Shear?
Thank you, Your Worship. So from the period from November 1, 19, to September 20, noting that COVID did have a few restrictions early on in the epidemic, we had 232 inquiries about tree removal permits. 260 of those went to an application process. 242 of those were approved for safety, health, or home renovation-type project reasons, mostly safety, and 28 were denied.
Counselor?
So overwhelmingly, we're approving the permits that are requested. I do have one final question for our staff. And I know this is asking for an annual budget update. But have you given consideration to if you had to implement this now or without any additional budget, what trade-offs would be to accomplish this?
Ms. Shear?
Your Worship, the cost of enforcing a 40-centimeters diameter is about $250,000 a year. That includes two forestry technologists or professional arborists, who, as long as, well, as well as all their overhead salary benefits, vehicles and office space. If we were to attempt to accommodate that within the forestry budget, we could reduce our planting, which would be in the range of 650 to 750 trees per year. I would suggest that we would want to make sure we have sustainable funding. These folks with forestry credentials are not always the easiest to hire and would be very difficult, I think, to hire on a short-term contract. So we'd want some continuity that would make it an appealing prospect to come be part of our team at the City of London.
Counselor?
Thank you for that, Ms. Shear. So colleagues, you know, we've heard from staff that the approximate impact, $250,000 for 10 centimeters, on a problem that frankly hasn't been identified as a problem in the community. And we want to send staff to prepare a budget case to bring back to us at a time when we know there aren't exactly a lot of municipal dollars laying around. So for that reason, I'm going to be voting against Part B. I just can't send our staff off to do work that we don't have the money to do or that we have to offset by not planting. Our tree canopy is growing, and I want it to keep growing, and I want us to keep planting. And if I've got to choose between continuing at our planting rate or reducing the centimeters of diameter by 10 centimeters, the trees that we're going to require a removal permit for, I'm going to choose the planting every time. I hope you will, too. I realize there may be some differences of opinion on that. But that's the reason I will be voting against Part B. Otherwise, I support the staff's original recommendation, and I support the Part C with a report back in five years for reassessment. Until then, I hope we decide as a council to keep planting.
Thank you. Counselor Turner?
Thank you, Your Worship. So I'd encourage my colleagues to support what was put forward at the Planning and Environment Committee. The motion was a compromise rather than looking for opportunities in this calendar year and this budget update to take a look and spend some time to find those opportunities which might present themselves over the course of the next year. And ask staff to take a look and see, can this be done within budget or as certain components of it could be done within budget and other that might need additional funding through future budget increases or amendments? That's all this is asking. I think that's reasonable. It's a year's time from now. It gives lots of notice rather than kind of immediate notice on a budget process that's already in process and started. The other part is that, contrary to what Counselor Lewis is saying there, the best way to preserve our tree canopy is not to cut it down in the first place. Planting trees takes a little while for them to develop the canopy and the cover that a mature tree does. And if our efforts are focused on planting rather than preservation, we're going to be much further behind in our planting, in our canopy goals that we have set as a city. We have made some progress, and we've made some progress for a few reasons. Because, one, the investments that we've been putting into planting, but even more so as a result of our preservation efforts from the Tree Preservation Bylaw, the Boulevard Tree Preservation Bylaw, and more responsibly is the Woodlands Conservation and regime that we have for woodlot protection zones. And those were put in place over the past few terms, and have made a good impact. And the report that came forward to PEC demonstrated that we have seen potentially some canopy growth and increase over the period that we've been measuring it. So this is important. It's not, at the time that the business case comes forward, we'll see whether there was operational changes that could be made or whether there's a cost associated with it. And we'll have the opportunity to weigh all of that in a year's time. So this is not an impending or challenging request. I think it's quite reasonable, and I really think that it needs the support of this council. So I urge you to support the motion that was put forward by the committee. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I have no one else on the speaker's list. Oh, I do now. I do now. I have Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a question through you to Ms. Shear. One of the changes we made recently to the Tree Protection Bylaw was to allow a third-party arborist to submit a report. So the applicant for a tree removal would submit their own independent arborist's report, and that eliminated the need for city staff, city foresters, to go out and assess the tree that was, that they were seeking to remove. And we were told at the time that that was going to be a significant reduction of staff resources and time and would be a more efficient process. So I wonder, knowing that we have that in place, where we are accepting with every application an independent arborist's report, and we don't need to send city staff out, is that $250,000 estimate based on the old way we did things, where we always had to have a city arborist inspect the tree? Or does that take into account this amendment that was made recently?
Let's ask Ms. Shear.
Thank you, Your Worship. That does take into account the change in policy that allows us to review a report from an independent certified arborist. What we've largely done by doing that is streamline the timelines for homeowners who don't have to wait quite as long to find out about whether or not their tree will be approved for removal. So the $250,000 does reflect that. And certainly, we can report back with some alternatives in a business case in the future, if that's desirable to council.
Counselor Cassidy?
So, thank you, Your Worship. So I'm glad Ms. Shear said that last part, because that's what I was going to ask again as my follow-up question. If we're looking for a business case, we are not changing policy. We are not implementing anything. We are not putting any financial outlay out there. But I believe we could, since we have already found significant efficiencies in how we do the process, I believe the business case could seek to find increased efficiencies and more streamlining and make this as efficient as possible. As far as tree protection bylaws go, London is an outlier in the size of trees that we are protecting. Most other municipalities that have a tree protection bylaw start at much smaller diameters, including 30 centimeters diameter in many municipalities. London was also an outlier in not having a tree protection bylaw for the longest time. And so implementing this in the first place was a big change for London. And if we are going to retain our status as the Forest City, if we are going to continue to value our trees, and we're looking at the current tree canopy as a value somewhere in the range of $1.5 billion. So every tree lost, when you look at one of the larger, older trees, they're irreplaceable, first of all, because you cannot replace a tree size for size. You're always going to go with something substantially smaller, which reduces our canopy, even if we replace it at the rate of 3 to 1, which is what our goal is. So the canopy is reduced right there. And even though the tree is valued in the hundreds of thousands of dollars range for some of these older trees, it's a moot point because no matter how much money you spend, you're never going to replace the canopy that is lost with an older, more established tree. And finally, when you look at the results of the Tree Protection Bylaw and various other policies in the report, it does not say specifically that it was the Tree Protection Bylaw that has led to some improvement. There are a number of strategies, and especially the urban forest strategy in general, has led to a 3% increase in our tree canopy. Now, if we're going to meet the goals that we want to meet, it doesn't just mean planting saplings around the City of London. It means protecting and preserving as many of the trees that we already have in the city as we possibly can. And a big part of the change, I had a conversation with Mr. Kotsifas many years ago, when we spoke about the initial changes that were taking place because of the Tree Protection Bylaw. And at that time, his response to my question about new development was that he felt that there was a greater effort being made by developers to preserve more trees on development sites. And city staff were proactively working with developers during the site plan process to preserve as many trees as possible.
15 seconds, please.
And I think that that is a welcome change because of the, some of the policy changes we've put in place. It will not hurt to get a business case to see exactly what the cost is. And I encourage staff to look at the most efficient way of addressing this as possible.
Thank you. Counselor Hopkins?
Yeah, thank you. And I would encourage my colleagues to support the Planning Committee's recommendation. And I'm sure that we heard loud and clear from the public that more can be done. We know we've been doing a number of things with our bylaws and our woodlot acquisition fund. There's lots more that we can be doing. We heard loud and clear from the public that we can be doing more. And I agree with Counselor Lewis that our canopy has grown because of what we've been doing, and we must continue to do. We're compared to other municipalities. We're on the lower scale when it comes to protecting the diameter of our trees. Toronto, Ottawa, 30, 10%. It's not as if we're in the high category here. And it was a compromise. I would like my colleagues to know that. I wasn't, I'm not sure if you were listening in to the Planning Committee meeting, but this was a compromise. We're looking at a business case. We're not making decisions at this moment about should it or shouldn't it be 40 centimeters. Keeping our trees, that's where we can make a huge difference. And this is looking into a business case to give us some more information. We're not making a decision right now at this moment. And I would encourage each and every one of you to support the recommendation.
Thank you. Counselor Squire?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I don't want to confuse, and I don't think any of us should confuse, an argument that we're all in favor of enhancing the tree canopy and having more trees with an argument that we have to have this bylaw in place to do that. The numbers that I'm looking at, and in particular, the number of approvals and denials, when you look at 10% being denied out of 500, that tells me that people are very responsible when it comes to trees on their own private property. They're largely making applications that are appropriate and should be done on their property. I initially voted against the Tree Protection Bylaw because I thought it was an interference with people's private property rights. And I like to think that people are responsible in terms of what they do with trees on their property. Since this bylaw has come into place, the primary complaint that I've had is that people have to go through an application process to do something that they think is appropriate on their property. And in most all cases, is appropriate on their property. The vast majority of complaints I get are with regards to trees removed by the city on public property. Usually, there's a valid reason for that, disease or otherwise. So I'm not going to support this business case moving forward. I've accepted the bylaw. I've accepted that it's in place. I don't spend a lot of time worrying about it. But certainly philosophically, given that I didn't support the bylaw in the first place, I'm not going to support it becoming stricter.
Thank you. Counselor Van Holst?
Yes, thank you, Worship. And I'm also not going to be supporting Part B. I don't think we need to spend more money policing residents. They're doing a fine job. We're not the only ones who care about trees. The reason that we would have passed this is because there's, in the first place, a concern by the public out there. We all understand that trees are valuable. And there's instances where somebody wants a different type of tree, a tree in a different place. This doesn't apply to our city. So I don't think we need to have it become stricter and stricter for our residents. What I would like to see is that money spent on the trees that we do have that are in danger. For instance, just near Tweedsmere is a stand of oaks, a big woodlot that we've allowed to become infested with gypsy moths. And I would like to see some more action about there. There's where $250,000 could be spent looking after the huge trees that are just getting eaten by these infestations. So I don't see enough action there, and that's where I would like to see it. So this, to me, is a diminishing return, a small gain with not much to show for it. Whereas I think looking after these types of infestations and going after the real problems is what my residents are calling for. No one's asked me to make this, the diameter of the trees and the Tree Protection Bylaw, smaller. But they have asked me to look after those troubled areas, and I think that's what we should do. So that's where I hope our focus will be, and I'll vote against Part B.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll be brief here, and I understand, I agree with the number of comments that have been made by my colleagues. What struck me with the numbers, as Counselor Squire pointed out, the majority, vast majority of applications have been approved. I think, you know, we're not dealing with big, mature trees here. There are, you know, 200 to 300 applications. We're not talking a lot of trees coming down here. What we do add to, though, is bureaucracy and red tape for our citizens. We add to cost, which for some might be no big deal, but the cost of an application, plus the cost of an arborist, et cetera, et cetera. I think lead us down to a road where we could get into an area of noncompliance, where we might get people just not bothering getting application and taking trees down on their own. So I won't be supporting this. I don't think moving from 50 centimeters to 40 centimeters will be that impactful. And I think 50 is a reasonable level, and we shouldn't waste staff time in exploring another 10 centimeters.
Thank you. Any other comments from colleagues? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. First, I look forward to Counselor Van Holst bringing in a budget amendment about increasing the budget for that area of urban forestry and debating it during the budget. I think he might be on to something there in terms of increasing that budget area. On this specific recommendation from Planning Committee, which is to have a business case come forward next year for us to consider, I think there's good merit in it. We're talking about expanding the protection from 6% of the urban forest to 11%. If that can be accomplished with relatively small expenditure, and it protects a lot more trees, I think it could be extremely good value for money. These large trees are providing really important services in the These large trees are providing really important services in the city. You know, they cool down people's houses, they provide shade. These are not small trees, like a 40-centimeter tree is a very large tree that's providing a lot of canopy cover. And the urban forest strategy's got a lot of different components and I like all of them, but I want to do the ones that are delivering the most value for money. And it's a difficult thing to measure the impact of the Tree Protection Bylaw because there are a lot of cases where people will not apply for a permit to remove the tree because they talk to an arborist and the arborist says, "You can't take that tree down. It's perfectly healthy. It's too big. Don't waste your time applying for a permit. You just have to leave it." And so we'll never hear about those trees that are still up because nobody applied for a permit for them. The arborist just said, "Don't do it." And the feedback from the arborists has been that it has been protecting trees and we can see at least some evidence that the canopy is growing at a relatively fast rate over the last few years that the Protection Bylaw has been in place. So I think it's worth considering. You know, if we lower the threshold for protection, are we going to be able to protect more trees at a very low cost per tree? Is it going to keep the urban forest stronger and providing more services in the community? So I think it's worth considering and that's really all that's being suggested here is let's take a look at the business case, not right now, but next year when we've got time to consider it, look at the costs and benefits and then make a decision about whether we want to do it or not. So I think it's prudent. I actually think these things that provide public services that are hard to quantify, they're very important. You know, the urban forest is not a small thing. And so I hope people will, you know, at least leave the door open to dealing with it, even if you might be a bit skeptical at this point that it's a great use of money. I think looking at the business case makes sense. There's going to be lots of things we're going to want business cases for next year and I hope we'll kind of have that attitude on most of these things. Well, I'd be open to seeing the details.
Thank you. I have no other speakers on this list. Counselor Cassidy, I'm going to turn it back to you, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I do want to point out that there is an amendment sheet that there was a property that was included as part of the Tree Protection Zone and because of lack of communication with this property owner that the urban forester, Ms. Gillan Spence, is recommending that we remove this particular property from the bylaw. And so that is, I guess the clerk will advise us on how we do that. I guess we would vote on the amendment first. And secondly, I did want to point out, somebody mentioned a fee. That is part of the proposed changes here is that the fee would be removed from the Tree Protection Bylaw, fee for homeowners.
Thank you. Let's go to the clerk for that, whether that's going to be in two or three votes. We'll just get clarity, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Counselor Cassidy is correct. The amendment would be to amend Part A to say that the proposed attached revised bylaw be introduced at today's council meeting, noting that the property located at 7006 Bradish Road be removed. And that is reflective in staff's memo that is attached as Communication Number Three from J.A. Spence. So you need to do the amendment first to Part A and then I would do A and C as amended and then call B separate.
So are you putting that forward, Counselor Cassidy?
Yes, so I will put the amendment proposed by Ms. Spence on the floor.
Thank you. Is there a second for the amendment, Counselor Hopkins? Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, let's call that vote.
I vote yes, it's not working.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 1.
Counselor Cassidy.
So now I will put A as amended and C on the floor.
Looks like I'm going to look for a second for that as well, if I could, please. Counselor Lewis, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, let's call that question.
I'm having a computer problem here. I tried to vote yes on the last one and it came up as a no and I'm very sorry, but something's going on here and I have to reboot my computer. I'm very sorry. And I'm voting yes on this.
Thank you. Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy.
And now I will put Part B on the floor.
So that does not require a second. We've had discussion.
Closing the vote and the motion is lost, 7 to 8.
Thanks very much, Counselor Cassidy.
So I will put Item 8 on the floor, which is 4.1 from the Committee Report. It is the seventh report of the London Advisory Committee on Heritage. And council may recall, at our last meeting, we referred a motion to designate or request to designate 183 and 197 Anne Street as heritage properties. And that was referred to the November 30th meeting of the Planning and Environment Committee because at that same meeting, we would be hearing an application for a development at that site. It turns out that the applicant for the development at that site has asked to defer the matter of their development to a future Planning and Environment Committee meeting. And so city staff recommended that we also defer the heritage matter to that same meeting. So without a specific date, we will, we need reconsideration from the November 30th date to a future meeting of the Planning and Environment Committee.
Before we get into discussion on that, by virtue of it, there is a process. I am going to just ask the clerk to clarify so that we can do this in the right order. So clerk, if you don't mind.
Thank you, through Mr. Mayor. Part A of the recommendation is the recommendation for the reconsideration, so that will need to be called first. And the reason for the reconsideration is that this matter was a decided matter of council and it has not been a year yet. And as per our council procedure by law, we would need a reconsideration. So you would call A first, which requires a second. If that passes with two-thirds of council in favor, then Counselor Cassidy would put the remaining clause on the floor.
Thanks very much. Counselor Cassidy, are you prepared to put A forward for discussion?
Yes, Your Worship.
Do you have a second? Counselor Pelosi, thank you very much. Any comments or questions with respect to this? This is for reconsideration. So with that, we will, I see no one on the speakers list, we'll call the question. Thank you. Counselor Cassidy.
So I will put the motion on the floor as it is detailed in the report that we changed the date on which the Civic Administration is to report back on this matter from November 30th to a future meeting of the Planning and Environment Committee as the applicant is proposing to alter the building design resulting in the need for consideration by Civic Administration.
Comments or questions? If you know one on my list, we'll call the question. So I think Counselor Cassidy, we let you sit, oh, sir, you're already sitting down. Very good. All right, thank you.
That is my report.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your report. Much appreciated. Now for the 18th report of the Corporate Services Committee, may I turn to Counselor Kaybaga, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to put the 18th report of the Corporate Services Committee on the floor. We didn't really have much on the agenda. We had two speakers who came to speak on the advisory committees and an appointment for the Accessibility Advisory Committee. I'll put all three items on the floor.
Thank you. Does anyone wish any item dealt with separately? Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you, Counselor Kaybaga. You can sit down now too, if you'll wish. There we go. So now for the 13th report of Civic Works, I'll turn over to Counselor Lehman, please. Who is sitting, by the way.
No, I'm standing. Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to address the 13th report of the Civic Works Committee. I'll be pulling Number 11, 2.9, the Act of Transportation Infrastructure Plan. I've heard no other requests for other items to be pulled.
Do colleagues wish any other items dealt with separately? Seeing none? Any comments or questions with respect to the 13th report with the exception of Item 2.9? Comments or questions? Counselor Turner, thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just with respect to Item 2.2 or Item 3, through you, Ms. Chair. Just wondering, I recognize we've now got some clearer timelines on the implementation of the Green Bin Program. Will we continue to look for opportunities to accelerate that where they might present themselves or is this what we might consider as probably the best-case scenario at this time?
Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Your Worship. Certainly, we will be looking for those opportunities where we can find them. The continued impacts of COVID in our ability to engage with the community does mean things take a little bit longer. We are confident we can make these timelines in a COVID context and where we can accelerate them. Certainly, that would be in everybody's best interest.
Counselor Turner? Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none? With all but Item 2.9 on the agenda, we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, Your Worship. What we have before us with Number 11, as you can see, there's an amendment before you to the motion that was approved at Civic Works. I'd like to speak to that. A while back, the COVID-19 resilience infrastructure stream of 5.5 million was made available to the City of London. The Civic Works Committee asked staff to bring back a list of active transportation initiatives that could be funded using that stream. Last week at Civic Works, a report came back with a total of 11 projects totaling a cost of more than $28 million. The Civic Works Committee passed a motion directing all 5.5 of the COVID fund be directed to some of those initiatives. In the report that was presented to Civic Works, the staff noted that that fund could also be applied to other infrastructure projects and that they had identified some potential projects. So last week in speaking to staff, the HVAC projects noted in the amendment for Stronach and Carling Arenas, those projects were on that staff list. You know, it struck me that's rare that we have an opportunity to have things such as HVAC being funded by other levels of government. So in exploring that, we have an opportunity here to stretch taxpayers' dollars and to make full use of funding available to our city. And I apologize if this sounds, if this can be a little complex, it shouldn't be. Sometimes with all the funding that's going around these days, there is a certain degree of complexity. So bear with me. If we, as the amendment states, could use 2 million of that 5.5 and put it towards the HVAC projects at Stronach and Carling Arenas, we would then have 2 million freed up. We could take that 2 million and use it as a municipal portion in applying for another 5 million through the PTS stream for active transportation. The net result being is that we would end up with $10 million of active transportation funding of active transportation projects out of that list as opposed to the 5.5 we originally have at no extra cost to the city. This amendment is not against the spirit of the motion. In fact, I believe it enhances the spirit of the motion in that we gain more active transportation while at the same time being prudent with taxpayers' money and taking full advantage of the funding available. I've had discussions with the City Treasurer to make sure I'm not off-base on this logic. So I would like to ask the City Treasurer to comment on the numbers in the amendment before you and her comments on that, that kind of train of thought.
Ms. Bourbon, you have any comments on that?
Thank you, through the chair. So as outlined in
Thank you, through the chair, so as outlined in the Civic Works Report, there is a specific reference, I think it's on page two, that does refer to the unallocated portion of the PTS funding, and should some projects be put forward through that stream, there would be a requirement for municipal allocation of approximately twenty-seven percent. Also, so all of the active transportation projects are available for submission through that stream, as they are also available for submission through the COVID Resilience Fund. So council has two sources of financing that it could pursue to support these projects. With respect to the COVID resilience funding, that is one hundred percent provincial funding, so if the city were to select a project that was already funded in its tax-supported budget, which the two HVAC projects are, the two million dollars is already approved as tax-supported contributions in the city's capital plan either next year or the year before, so those projects, if you were to submit them through the COVID stream, would give you two million dollars worth of funding that could either be returned to its source, or council could reallocate to another stream.
Councilor Lehman?
Thank you, so that, what I'm doing in this amendment is not returning it to funding, it is allocating specifically towards active transportation as I outlined. So thank you, colleagues, for bearing with me through this stream of logic here, and I think we have an opportunity here that we should carefully consider, and thank you for that consideration.
Do you have a secretary for that? Counselor Lewis, are there comments or questions? Counselor Lewis? I apologize, Counselor Squire, they're near each other.
One of the things, the reason, one of the reasons I'm a lawyer is because I failed math miserably in high school and university, and was sort of forced to use my mouth as a way of earning a living, I still don't understand this, I have to say, but I am concerned about one thing, it seems as if people are just talking as if this money's guaranteed, as if the funding that we're going to get from the federal and provincial government is somehow money that we're getting for sure that makes us all very good, and I need some clarification, is this, are these applications we're making, and maybe staff can help me out, is it, by us redoing this application and asking for more, more money, I guess we're going to be asking for eleven million dollars rather than five point five, I mean, is that going to make it tougher to get the money, is that, do we have any ability to know whether that's going to make this process easier, harder, because there seems to be an assumption that that money's guaranteed to us, and I'd like to know the answer to that.
Ms. Barbone, can you bring clarity?
Yes, thank you, through Your Worship, so the COVID resilient stream that was announced is, the City of London received a five point five million dollar allocation, so there is a process that the city has to submit applications to ensure that that money will be granted to us, but we know that the city's allocation is a full five point five million dollars, and it is up to council to select out of the priorities for submission for that funding to be put forward. Within that funding, there are a range of projects that could be put forward, it includes retrofits, repairs, and upgrades for municipal facilities, there's an application, there's also another stream, there's four different categories, so that's one of them, COVID response infrastructure is another, active transportation of which all of the CWC report projects would be eligible, as well as disaster mitigation, so all of these projects would be eligible for submission, it is up to council to select the priority for which projects it would like to be put forward.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. You were sitting.
I was just waiting for the answer, so it's my fault, can I carry on?
Counselor Squire, please.
Just to the Treasurer again, my question actually was, this five point, this ten point one million, or I should say eleven million dollars that's coming from other levels of government, is it guaranteed? In your answer, it seemed to me you're saying, well, we're entitled to it, we qualify for it, you know, I still need to know, and maybe somebody will flesh this out later, are we still going through an application where a government can say, you know what, London asked for all of these projects, we'll give them one of the HVAC projects, but we won't give them all of their transportation projects, that's all I'm asking, I just, if it's guaranteed and we already have the money, that makes a big difference to me.
Ms. Barbone, can you help out, please?
Through the chair, the five point five million dollars to the City of London has been allocated and is guaranteed, the question is, what projects would fit the criteria that the City of London would want to put forward, there is still an approval process, but as long as the eligibility criteria has been met, I suspect that they will not turn it down, but there may be some conversations around certain things that they felt didn't meet the criteria, but the five point five is allocated to the City of London and is guaranteed funding for the City of London.
Counselor Squire.
I hope this gets clarified more, I just, I am nervous about changing this by saying, well, we're going to go for the gusto here and try to get, do even better with the money, and I'm also always cautious of saying, let's just, let's access more provincial and federal money, you know, it's there, let's take it, I think that's going to be an interesting issue as we move forward, but I'm still thinking about this, and I am concerned about what the end result of this amendment would be.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, first of all, I will through you ask a question of our Treasurer, and I think I know how she'll answer it already, given her previous answer to Counselor Squire, would the same situation exist with the funding that's been indicated, has been allocated to London for the PTS stream, which is a shared federal provincial municipal funding stream, there is money sitting there that we, has been allocated for us, we have to now submit projects that are approved to get that money delivered, is that correct?
Ms. Barbone.
Through the chair, so the money that was approved and allocated to the City of London under the PTS stream, again, is the funding stream and was a set allocation for the City of London, all projects that have to be submitted, so there, all of these streams do have an application process and do require formal approval provided, where, and that's where the province, that's the forms and applications that the city puts forward to ensure that the projects are in fact aligned with the eligibility criteria and can meet the criteria that has been outlined, so as long as the process puts forward projects that are part of that, the City of London has a very, very strong case of having those projects put forward to be approved through either stream, the amounts of money were allocated to the City of London in either stream, so that money is there until such time that the city puts forward an allocation, and that that is formally approved by the province or the feds.
Counselor Lewis.
So, and I don't want to put words in our Treasurer's mouth, but what I'm hearing is essentially, it's like the city having a pre-approved mortgage, and now we have to fill out the application for the specific purchase we want to make for that pre-approved amount, and that's why, colleagues, I'm, I second Counselor Pelosi's motion at the committee, and I will second this motion tonight, because it makes sense, and the question's really a simple one, we're going to spend two million dollars of London taxpayer money regardless of which we land on tonight, so when it's all said and done, the question is, do we want seven point five million dollars in assets to show for that two million, or do we want twelve point five million dollars in assets to show for it? We've got a list, and it's a great list, there's stuff in my ward there that I would really like to see, I know that there's stuff, stuff in other Counselors' wards that they would really like to see, there's great things in there that are going to benefit a lot of different neighborhoods around the city, but it's a twenty-eight million dollar list, and they're not all going to happen, so we can spend the entire five point five million of the COVID resiliency fund on those active transportation projects, and our two million in London dollars on the HVACs, and get what we get, and we can do that all in the next year, or we can get three point five million in active transportation projects and two million in HVAC from the COVID resiliency, and then take the two million of London dollars we haven't spent, and turn it into municipal contributions to PTS funding, and leverage an additional five million dollars out of the senior levels of government to fund even more of the active transportation projects on that twenty-eight million dollar list. I think it's really important to remember, we need municipal contribution dollars to get the PTS funding stream dollars, and when we, as a council collectively, had our votes around the BRT components, we collectively decided to also vote on some additional projects, and allocated pretty much all of our municipal contribution funds then, so now to get access to that remaining pool of thirty million or so dollars of PTS eligibility, we have to come up with some more municipal contributions, and we have to come up with that at a time when municipal dollars just aren't laying around. This motion lets us do that, and I'll tell you, I talked, I had the opportunity to talk to Jameson Roberts today from the Cycling Advisory Committee, I appreciate him making his time with advisory committees, not making meeting right now, I wanted to reach out to him and ask what he thought, would he rather have five point five million this year and be done, or ten point five million over the next couple of years in active transportation projects, and of course, although he recognizes that folks may have some concerns about delay, that he'd rather have the ten point five million. Listen, colleagues, I want the Weyveld bike lanes in my ward, I would like Counselor Pelosi to have the Jelena lanes in her ward, and all of us to have great items on that, are on that list, but we don't have twenty-eight million dollars for that, we can get ten point five million from senior levels of government and put a big dent in this list, or we can take five point five million and make a smaller impact, personally, I'd like the bigger impact, so I hope colleagues will support this amendment.
Thank you, Counselor Van Hool.
Thank you, Your Worship, I'm happy to support this amendment as well, some very creative thinking on the part of Counselor Lehman, he's certainly earned his keep today, and I also like that he was paying attention to the other items in that report, and particularly the HVAC things, so, because that was significant to me on their own, I think I'd rather make sure that we support a project where we increase some air quality, as opposed to pay for things where the air is already fresh, which is most of the outside things, so I think it makes a great balance too, we've done, just for this particular stream, I think it shows a good balance in our choices, and by leveraging it further, we're doing well, the question I have through you to staff is regarding the, just remind me of the amount of the PTS funding that was available to us, and the likelihood that we would be able to use that all up.
Ms. Barbone.
Thank you, through the chair, the amount of unallocated PTS dollars is approximately thirty million dollars, so thirty-one point two, which has not been committed or allocated to anything yet, any of that money, should we seek an application, requires a twenty-seven percent municipal contribution, so we would need to ensure that we have funds in the budget. The only other thing I would add is that there is no timeframe for when that fund will open for the intake in 2021, so the COVID resilient stream is immediate, and is open now for us to move forward with the projects the council wishes to see, if council were to proceed with looking at projects for the PTS funding, we do not know when that intake will open at this point in time in 2021, so that's where council would certainly want to wish and weigh the delay about whether the priority is to put forward active transportation or the HVACs, noting that it has to be done by the end of the year in 2021.
Okay, well, thank you, and certainly I think HVAC projects can be pursued at any time of the year, whereas some of the other active transportation, we need to make it to the construction season, so it seems to me we'll be able to move on those fairly quickly, so I'll support this, thank you.
Thank you, I had Counselor Pelosi, then Deputy Mayor Helmer, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for colleagues to this discussion tonight, as much as I appreciate the thought process behind this amendment, personally, I won't be supporting it, with the COVID-19 resiliency infrastructure stream, we know that money is available now with the five point five on the table, active transportation is my priority when going through the list of four, it's also important to note that the city does not have any projects for disaster mitigation that they were looking at bringing forward to this stream. We know with COVID-19 that it's going to be with us next year, that Londoners have relied more on local networks of active transportation, both for personal commuting and just enjoyment of your neighborhoods, space to distance, be out with the family, out with the kids, and running local errands. As we've heard from the City Treasurer, that the intake for the PTS is in 2021, and lots can change between now and then, we know we need more infrastructure now for active transportation, we know for that resiliency stream that projects have to be started by next September and completed by the end of 2021, so knowing that, I'm going to ask for support of the whole five point five, as originally stated within the motion as put forward in the Civic Works Committee, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Thank you, I just want first to clarify, the actual recommendation from committee, is that on the floor, it just seemed that we skipped that step.
It was on the floor with the amendment, Deputy Mayor, according to the clerk.
Okay, well, I'll speak to the amendment, I think there's, there's three things we're sort of deciding all at once here, one is, what's going to happen, you know, what kind of infrastructure is going to be built, what projects will be done, when is it going to happen, is it going to be next year, is it going to be sometime after that, and how's it going to be paid for? And I agree with Counselor Pelosi in terms of active transportation being my priority, I think the HVAC, HVAC projects are good projects and should go ahead, and I certainly would support spending money on those projects, but if we take two million dollars of the resilience infrastructure stream, and we put it into HVAC, it will mean that three and a half million dollars in active transportation projects happen next year, and not five and a half, because the public transit stream is not open right now, and it is not exactly a fast-moving application process, we have already applied for, and we are at the front of the line when we came in for applications for a big chunk of the funding through that stream, it has not moved extremely quickly, it is currently not open, and if we want to build active transportation projects in 2021, there is a fund that is open, is designed to move quickly, and has to be spent by the end of next year, and so I would like to maximize that opportunity right now, the unallocated part of the public transit stream, ideally, I'd like to use it for transit, and we have actually a fair amount of transit-related pressures and transit-related opportunities, for example, electrifying the fleet, which we would need funding to do, and, and I think that my first priority for that funding would be for transit, my second priority would be for active transportation, as we see in the report from the Civic Works Committee, there is far in excess of five and a half million dollars of projects that need a funding source in order to move ahead in the short term, so I'm not concerned that we're going to leave thirty-one million dollars on the table, I think we're going to maximize that thirty-one million dollars by finding the municipal money we need to leverage it, we need to find eight million dollars within our existing capital budgets or new capital money to make that happen, and considering the return, I think we're going to do that, and we're going to do that for either active transportation projects sometime after 2021, or transit-related projects sometime after 2021, and that's my preference is that we use those, I don't, I don't want anyone to think that we're going to get less if we just go along with the original motion, which says, consider other funding sources for all these other projects, because that's what the original motion says, and that public transit stream is one of those potential funding sources, another would be, say, the federal gas tax, so, you know, I think the original motion was good because it was seizing the opportunity that's in front of us, it's not making it more complicated than it needs to be, the HVAC projects, I think, on their own merit are good projects and should go ahead, and I'm fine with them being paid for through property taxes.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? Then I think Counselor Morgan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think on this, I mean, Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think on this, I mean, we're going to vote on this, but one of the underlying things I think we need to realize is that both the original motion and this motion still identify active transportation as a really important priority for the city. And I think there's a number of colleagues who may have some different perspectives on how to go about this. Councilor Lehman is pitching, you know, a balanced approach with the resiliency funding, and then, you know, an allocation through another fund. I think there are pros and cons to that that have been outlined, but I don't want this to turn into a, if you don't support 3.5 million dollars of active transportation projects, and then want to do it a different way, that you're not supportive of active transportation. That just doesn't, it's not an argument that I think would make sense to anybody who's stepping back and looking at this. And I'm not saying anybody's saying that. It just sometimes when we have these debates where we're adjusting the level of money slightly for different priorities, sometimes it turns into that. And I just want to say, what I'm hearing today is lots of support for active transportation, our city, slightly different approach on the when, you know, the how to fund it, and a couple of the details on the program to use. And again, there are pros and cons to both approaches. So I wanted to weigh in to that at the end of the debate, and I appreciate the comments so far.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think for a wrap, I'll look for Councilor Lehman, please.
Thank you, colleagues, for that very thoughtful discussion. You know, as Councilor Morgan said, I think we're after the same thing. How we get there is where we differ. I understand some concerns about some delay. I don't think it's substantial delay. When we talk about 2021, 2021 is in another, you know, five weeks. I think the opportunity to increase active transportation projects put forth from 5.5 million up to 10 million is no insatiable amount of money, all at no extra taxpayer expense. I think this is a good way, a good prudent way to maximize and leverage government funding available to the city. And at the end of the day, we're going to have a lot more active transportation paid for by other levels of government. So I encourage you to support this amendment. But thank you for your discussion.
Thanks very much. We will call the question.
Your worship, it's Councilor Hopkins. Are we voting on the amendment?
I was just thinking, as we did that, I'm just going to ask you not to vote quite yet. I'll just get the clerk to just clarify, but the answer is yes. But let's get the clerk to clarify so that we all understand. Thank you for that point, Councilor Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mary. Yes, the motion on the floor is the amendment put forward by Councilor Lehman and Councilor Lewis.
Are we good then, folks? Thank you very much. And I appreciate that again, Councilor Hopkins. So you will see the votes in front of you now for your consideration.
Closing the vote, and the motion carries eight to seven.
Thank you. And I believe we now need to put 2.9 on the floor as amended. Moved by you, Councilor Lehman, and seconded by Councilor Lewis. Thank you very much. Comments or questions? All right, see you now. We'll call the vote.
Just having the technology is a little slow. Just give us a moment. Thank you. Councilor Lehman. Closing the vote, and the motion carries 12 to three.
Thanks very much. Thank you, Councilor Lehman. Now for the 18th report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee, Deputy Mayor Homer, please.
Thank you. I'll put the report from SPPC on the floor. I haven't heard from anybody who wants anything pulled, but I'll just give people a second to give me a sense if they want something pulled.
Your worship, I believe Councilor Turner disclosed a peculiar interest on number six, which is tabling on the budget.
So that would be 4.1, where there's, where the Councilor Turner has indicated a conflict interest. Councilor Turner, would you rather speak to that than me? You have more wisdom in such things.
I identified for the ongoing discussions in the budget, the budget itself is just tabled. There was nothing as a decision point in that. So I don't think I have anything to declare conflict on at this point. When those items are tabled for individual vote, at that point, I will declare on those discreetly.
So noted. Thank you very much. Any items colleagues wish to have dealt with separately? Any comments or questions with respect to the items on 8.4, the report of the SPPC? I have no one on the speaker's list, therefore I'll call the question.
Councilor Hopkins, Councilor Van Mirbergin. Councilor Van Mirbergin? I am going to mark him as absent for this vote. Closing the vote, and the motion carries 14 to zero.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Homer. There are no deferred matters, nor inquiries that have been made aware of, but we do have an emergent motion request. The Councilor Hopkins has submitted an emergent motion related to proposed changes to the Conservation Authorities Act and the Planning Act. So there are two parts of this now. First, we'll seek leave to allow the emergent motion. And so I'll look for a mover for that, please. Councilor Pelosi, seconded by... Councilor Kayabaga, thank you. And we'll vote on that.
And again, I'm sorry, but I'll have to ask for your patience on the escribe system is slowing on us. Just so you're aware, we are working, continue to work with the vendor to try to resolve these issues that we're having. Councilor Van Holst and Councilor Squire. Oh, Councilor Squire is absent. Councilor Van Holst? Closing the vote, and the motion carries 13 to zero.
Thank you. And I'll look to Councilor Hopkins now to put this motion on the floor, and then following that, we'll look for a second or Councilor Hopkins.
Yes, your worship. I would like to bring forward this emergent motion, and I am looking for a second.
And you have one. I see Councilor Pelosi. Thank you very much. We'll call the question. In the spirit of democracy and clerk's good advice, anyone wish to speak to the motion? I suspect, oh, I was going to say, I was going to suspect there will be plenty of conversation during, but Councilor Hopkins, go ahead, please.
Yes, your worship, if I may, I would like to introduce the motion and give a little bit of background why this is an emergent motion to my colleagues. At a special UTRCA meeting held last Wednesday, the board met regarding the changes to Bill 229, and the concerns that the authority has to this, to the changes. And the board decided to bring forward a resolution asking the municipalities, which 17 municipalities sit on the board, to support the concerns that the authority has. So the emergent motion, Bill 229, came in on the budget bill that was introduced a couple of weeks ago. Yet right now is, I'm pretty sure in second reading, it will be going to committee. And on December the 10th, the provincial government at the legislature will be moving this budget bill forward. And it is important that we understand and have an opportunity to discuss the changes that are going on. When the provincial government came in a couple of years ago, they did announce that they were going to look at Conservation Authorities and the health units. So we know this has been going on. It's happening. Changes will are sort of needed. The board understands the review and the refinements necessary to Conservation Authorities need to happen, without a doubt. But this, the changes that this bill will be introducing are drastic. And Conservation Authorities that are operating at this time need more time to understand these changes, to deal with these changes as we move forward. I want to just sort of make a few comments about myself sitting on upper terms. I have sat there for, on the board for the past six years. One of the first things I learned when I came on the board was the importance of CAs. They're there to protect people and property. That's what the authority does. It deals with flooding, erosion, protecting the quality of our water. That's what they're mandated to do. And they do have that watershed approach that is their philosophy. We have a river in our city. It runs right through that river. And it's important, the importance of the Fanchard Dam protecting us. The Conservation Authority does a really good job in doing that. Just imagine if we didn't have the authority. And they are the experts. And to me, I am very privileged and honored to have learned a lot from my time on the board. As we deal with more challenges to protect our environment, more accountability, and a changing climate, our CAs will now have a different role, without a doubt. There are a number of concerns that I would just like to bring forward here with this motion, that I'm hoping I will get support from. And that is to make sure that you're all aware that the provincial government has gone through a consultation process. They've been doing it for the past year, just before, they wrapped up just before COVID hit in March. Unfortunately, the results of that consultation has not been posted. And as an AMO representative, I can say that AMO 2 is looking for clarification on that consultation, and the need for an understanding of the regulations that this bill will introduce. There is very little clarity on that. And clarification is needed to understand where we're going forward. Timelines are also needed. This motion does talk to the need for extending the timelines to allow for that transition to take place. Right now, ahead of board meeting today, we are looking at our draft budget for 2021, being approved at the beginning of the new year, and we will be starting in June with the 2022 budget. The challenges are many because we don't even know what mandatory, non-mandatory programs will be. There are, we need some time to digest, understand as we move forward. I do also want to remind colleagues, the Conservation Authority that I sit on gets 4.5% of its funding from the provincial government. These changes are going to require massive consultation, changes to agreements. Managing 17 agreements is going to take a lot of time, effort, and money, and there is no funding that is provided here. So as I wrap up, I am asking for your support to look at, to understand, and I hope you've had the time, to look at the concerns, understand them.
15 seconds, please.
And these concerns come from Conservation Ontario as well. I am asking that we need clarification to these new regulations, as well as that longer transition period, and the tools and the financial resources that will be needed to effectively implement their watershed management role. So with that, your worship, I am asking for your support.
Thank you. Councilor Lewis?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Councilor Hopkins, for providing us an overview on this. I really appreciate it because I haven't had a chance to absorb all of this yet. And I know with your involvement in the board, you've been on top of this a little bit more. I just wanted to ask a quick question through you to our staff, your worship. If municipally staff have had a chance to review concerns and the impacts, particularly identified in terms of impacts on municipalities, you know, I note that there's some suggestions of changes in appointments, and of course, changes in the mandatory and non-mandatory programs. So can our staff provide us any sort of sense of, from their perspective, how this impacts us as well?
Ms. Sheer, do you want to handle that?
Your worship, I will certainly give it a try, and perhaps Mr. Carter or Mr. Kostas may wish to weigh in as well. We have done some review of the information that is available. This has not gone through a typical process where we would normally see This has not gone through a typical process where we would normally see in environmental posting, and we would respond and have a period of time in which to provide formal comments, it is part of an omnibus bill. We don't have all the details, so I think there is more work that could be done to fully understand the intended scope from the province of those changes. Certainly, there are some things in here that are aligned with conversations we've had with the conservation authorities, and there are some things that really aren't as well-defined.
Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, worship. So, through you, I'm just going to ask a question of Counselor Hopkins. In terms of the motion that's before us today, is there an opportunity to also refer these concerns to staff, not necessarily in regard to passing this motion today, but to get them to provide us some more information on the municipal impacts moving forward as well? And how would, or, staff may have an idea of how that might work as well, but I'm just wondering if in addition to the motion, there's an opportunity for us to get some more information from staff as this rolls out or is delayed, whatever the, the direction the provincial government takes on this?
So, why don't we start with Counselor Hopkins and then potentially move to staff?
Yes, thank you for that question, Counselor Lewis, and I know there's a lot here to digest, there are a number of whereas clauses in this, and it's something that I am glad to hear that there is interest in understanding a little bit more as we deal with the changes to our CAs. So, I would be happy to refer this onto staff for their comments as well. Again, the concern is there is very little clarification in the regulations to all of us as we move forward, but I, again, we could always refer this back and eventually staff will, for staff's comments as we get further clarification.
Counselor Lewis, are you looking for any other comments from staff?
No, not at this time, I want to hear what other folks have to say, but I appreciate Counselor Hopkins helping me out with that and the information she provided. Thanks. As I said at the beginning, I did not have a chance to fully review this, and I'm certainly listening very carefully to what she's saying and the information in here, and I will share that I particularly found the chart where the CAs are listing significant concern, some concern and not a concern, to be helpful in, in terms of skimming through this quickly. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Counselor Morgan?
Yeah, I want to thank Counselor Hopkins for bringing this forward too, and I'm glad that Counselor Lewis asked some questions of staff. I would say, there's a lot here, and there's a lot here that I think is very important. There's also some here where I'm not quite sure what it actually means. Part D, the Province of Ontario be requested to receive current conservation authorities' municipal relationships. I'm not sure if there are actual improvements that could happen to the relationship, where I think the important components of this motion are, is the idea that we should not make changes to this legislation until conservation authorities and municipalities have been able to fully express their concerns and work through them. So, there's no need to rush through any sort of legislation as part of a budget bill when there are concerns and dialogue that needs to happen. And I, and I think in the last couple of weeks, there have been challenges with, you know, with the consultation of municipalities on, on areas that impact them, and, and so I'm very supportive of those components of the motion. I, I'm not sure the other ones are really necessary at this point, but I'm open to, to seeing where people want to go with it. I'm just, like Counselor Lewis, I'm unclear on what a couple of the components actually mean, but I'm very supportive of the idea that, you know, this legislation should not pass until these concerns have, have been addressed, consulted on, and hopefully, you know, dealt with in, in any sort of legislation that moves forward. So, I don't know if there's comments that Counselor Hopkins can make on what parts need to proceed, or if she can provide any clarification on some of the components, but I'm generally comfortable with proceeding with this. I just, there's, there's just a lot in this particular council motion, more than maybe might be actually necessary to achieve the goal.
Are you looking, Counselor Morgan, for a comment from Ms., from Counselor Hopkins with regard to this? I'm just trying to understand where you're trying to take this, please.
Well, I, my, maybe if everyone's supportive of this, that's fine, but if there are people who are hesitant on it for some reason, I'm not sure, I think there are non-operative components to this that really don't get to the point of the, you know, delay this and consult properly and adequately. So, if there's no concern by council, I don't, I don't mind proceeding, but if there was, I'd rather have, you know, a lot more support on it because I think there's important issues being raised here.
Thank you. Counselor Pelosi? Counselor Hopkins?
Yes, if I may, your worship, in answer to Counselor Morgan's questions, I know there was a lot to digest, that's why I added a lot of information to help you with that. This has come in very quickly, and again, there's a lot of clarification that is needed. At the board meeting last week, we did look at, can we pull certain things out, but the whole intent is to put all the concerns together. If you start pulling things apart, which we could have done at the board, the intent is to look and, and to acknowledge the concerns, and this came from the board, the board meeting held last Wednesday, and we put, put the whole recommendation for the motion forward to, to show there are concerns there, and as much as I would like to answer your question directly, this is, is an emergent motion for a reason, because there is very little time here to understand what's going on. I acknowledge that, but I, I think the main intent of this motion is to support the concerns of this conservation authority as we deal with the changes that we know will be happening, and we do need a greater understanding for clarification as well and timelines.
Thank you. Counselor Pelosi?
Thank you, worship, and thank you to Counselor Hopkins. She serves on the upper Thames CA, I serve as council's appointee to the Kettle Creek Conservation Authority. Wording from our last board meeting was sent to council earlier today, recognizing it's very much along the same lines as was the communication we got from the lower Thames earlier, recognizing that there was conservation authority, conversations happening with the province, whatever results of those were, they come out with their recommendations with, with very little information coming back to the CAs about what feedback they gathered, what made them make those decisions, and what the end results are they really are going for, which makes it hard to, to move forward, especially as quickly as they're trying to pass this through. So, from Kettle Creek, we share the same, the same concerns. We think it's a very tight timeline to trying to understand what's happening with our programming, recognizing that there are great partnerships with municipalities, and as Counselor Hopkins had said, that there's many member municipalities to these conservation authorities, and the CAs will have to negotiate with each member municipality, what is going to be paid for, who's going to do it, what programming will stop. So, there's very large conversations to be had, and recognizing the enforcement as well that CAs are doing for environmental protections. There's a lot going on, just looking for more time and more clarification and a more in-depth conversation, so looking for your support on this motion as well. To note, Central Elgin has passed, there's a council and Thames Centre has passed a motion like this last night at theirs as well, just as the region as well is in step. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from colleagues? Counselor Squire?
I just, first of all, I'm sort of where Counselor Morgan is, in that I agree that if there's, if there are changes that can be done between the conservation authorities and the provincial government, and we're not at the point where we should be passing this at the legislature, that's, that I suppose is a decision of the provincial government, which has the legislative authority over conservation authorities. And I'm always leery, as anyone who's heard me speak here, of saying that we're going to get involved in that relationship, that legislating power that the province has and, and speak on it. There are a lot of, and this, if you're talking about an omnibus bill, this is really also an omnibus motion. In other words, it says a lot of different things in it, many of which I don't have the ability to know if they're accurate at this point in time. I'm not saying anybody is not being straightforward from their point of view, but for instance, in the whereas, as it says, and whereas, changes to the legislation will create more red tape and costs for the conservation authorities and their municipal partners, and potentially result in delays in the development approval process. So, okay, that's being, that's what the conservation authority is saying. We also received a letter today from the London Development Institute that seems to say something completely different, that they're quite happy with the changes to the legislation, and my answer would be, I just don't know. I don't know, as I'm standing here now, if all of the whereas's are accurate. And then when I see, I'm, I'm in a similar spot to Counselor Morgan, when I look at the, what we're saying, for instance, E says, "The Province of Ontario be requested to embrace their longstanding partnership with the conservation authorities and provide them with the tools and financial resources they need to effectively implement their watershed role." That sounds to me like the conservation authorities feel they need more money now to carry out their responsibilities, and the concern I have in that area, I suppose, is, and I've stated it before, a budget is, that we bear a huge funding cost with the Thames Valley, Upper Thames Valley Conservation Authority, and yet we don't have the decision-making power, and I would like to see more responsibility taken on by the province in terms of financing. So, I don't know what all of the things in here mean, I am not able to test them. Counselor Lewis tried to ask that question of, of our municipal staff, and they weren't able to identify additional costs and additional red tape from what they said, and they haven't even done that analysis. So, it's very difficult for me to just say, yeah, I mean, I think there should be more consultation before legislation is passed, and by the way, I agree with all the whereas's, and I agree with all of the, the parts of the motion. So, I would much rather have a report back from our staff that addresses these issues and tells us, much as we got with London Hydro. London Hydro came to us as one of our boards and said, "Look, we want to make some changes here, they're great for London Hydro," and yet, staff came back and said, "You know what? They're not so great for the City of London." Perhaps our staff will say, "You know what? Some of these changes that the provincial government is doing are not all bad. Maybe some of them are good and some aren't so good." So, it's very difficult when people say, "Well, you can't separate everything, anything out, you gotta go for all of it for me to do that," because I would need much more information and a report from staff before I would be able to do that, because someone's going to ask me, "Well, Phil, what do you, you voted for this, so tell me about the more red tape and costs that the municipality is going to have, explain that to me." And I, and I, and I won't be able to explain it. So, right now, I'm in a, I'm in a bit of a quandary, not because I don't see the point, but because I don't think I can sign on to everything.
Thank you. Counselor Van Holst? Counselor?
Yes, thank you, thank you, your worship. So, yes, again, my, I think Counselor Squire and others have pointed out the concern I have too. This has come to me very quickly, and I, I looked up the, the actual bill and some of the comments that the province had made about it, difficult to put this together. It seems like maybe there's a bit of a power struggle happening between the province and the conservation authorities in this bill, and the conservation authorities seems to be asking us to approve the status quo, which again, may not, may not be the optimal direction for our municipality. So, that, that gives me some cause for concern. Can I ask, through you to staff or perhaps one of our representatives on that, on those committees, when the second reading is happening, it seems to say that the motion or the communication says that the first reading has passed, so what, how is this going to proceed? I guess my question is, what happens if, if we don't pass this motion?
Do staff have a comment on that from a timing standpoint? Mr. Carter, by chance?
Yes, your worship, Bill 229 receives second reading in the legislature on November eighteen, so it's under debate at this moment.
Thank you. Counselor Van Holst?
Okay, thank you, and so it seems like we're, we're asking to repeal that section, and that's really the substantive part of what's being asked for us. I might, I might be willing to do that, I'm, I'm not interested in, in passing those other, those other things, which seem to be supplementary, so that, that one item might put things off. I guess I should ask what, what the effect of that would be. So, if we have them delete that schedule, Schedule Six, as requested, then, then what happens? Then what would happen? I suppose the province would, would get the, get our request and either grant it or not. If they did grant it, then how would things move forward?
Mr. Carter, can we look to you again?
Your worship, after second reading, what usually happens with matters of this type, because it's a budget-related bill, is that the bill would be referred to the Standing Committee on Finance and Economic Affairs, and the purpose of that referral is for further debate and public consultation. So, after the debate and public consultation, it's possible that there will be amendments to the proposal on third reading, and I don't know when third reading is going to take place. I think Counselor Hopkins indicated that she thought that might come as early as next month, but I don't have any additional information I can share with you at this time.
Counselor Hopkins, I'm, I'm not sure if I'm now trying to reference you back as an expert witness to this, but go ahead, please, because I, I'm trying to be mindful that you've spoken to it, but also we need some of, I think, your insights as well. So, please go ahead.
Thank you for allowing me to just add to Mr. Carter's comments. We know this is going to go to the legislature on December the tenth for approval by the government. Right now, it will be going to committee, and, and then on December the tenth, for the bill to be most likely passed.
Mr. Carter, do you have any other thoughts based on those comments or any other insights?
I do not, your worship. It's possible that it may come back on December tenth. As had been noted, it's a budget bill, and one of the purposes of, of Bill 229 is to try to break down barriers to development approvals in the province. The focus of this initiative with respect to conservation authorities, vis-à-vis the municipality, is actually on clarifying a rather longstanding problem that occurs when municipalities issue planning approvals, but a further approval is required from the conservation authority for the same development to be undertaken. So, that is something that, you know, will be the focus, I think, of the debate. I don't know about the other details which have been raised by the conservation authorities.
Thank you. Counselor Van Holst, you still have the floor?
Thank you very much, and I note that we have a, another council meeting on December eighth, which would, which we could, I suppose, pass the same motion. So, my question through you, perhaps to Counselor Hopkins, what would be the effect of us taking some time to understand what's, what's happening here, and then trying to pass this motion on the, on the eighth?
Counselor Hopkins, you have some thoughts on that?
Yes, thank you for asking me, Counselor Van Holst, and I would like to go to staff to see if they would have enough information to give us back by December the eighth, or at planning, which is just before, council is the eighth, and November the thirtieth would be the next planning meeting, so question to go to staff.
Thanks very much. Let's take this back to staff. Would that be you, Ms. Sheer, or who would we ask that thoughtful question?
Thank you, your worship. We certainly could endeavor to try to find more information out through our government relations channels and our relationships through various organizations such as the Regional Public Works Commissioners of Ontario. Right now, we don't have a lot more than what's been shared today and what the CAs are aware of, but certainly we could provide a report back on what we do know now and any gaps are able to fill in.
Thank you for that. Counselor Van Holst?
Yes, thank you, your worship, and then perhaps a question through you to our clerks, if we do pass this motion on the eighth, are, are we able to get a communication to the province? uh, are, are we able to get a communication to the province, uh, in, in time to, uh, consider for their, their debate on the, on the tenth?
I saw nods, but I'll let the clerk respond.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, we, in the clerk's office, try our best to get all of the communications out, um, as soon as possible, uh, usually within the, the next day, uh, or two. But, uh, if it's urgent, we will make sure that it's, it's out the next day to the province.
You still have sixty seconds, councillor Van Holst.
Okay, well, thank you. I, because this is a confusing issue and it seems like there's an opportunity, uh, to, to push this forward, I'm going to move that we refer this, uh, to the, um, to the planning, uh, committee meeting of the, of the thirtieth.
Do you have a, are, are you done with that councillor Van Holst?
I, I, I think that's, that's my, uh, best suggestion for this situation. So I'll move that. Look for a seconder if anyone's interested.
Do you have a seconder for that? I see councillor Lehman has seconded that. Comments or questions about the referral? Deputy Mayor Helmer.
First, I want to point out that, uh, anyone can request to pull some of these things separately. If you want to vote differently on different parts of the motion and as much as councillor Hopkins might like us to keep it all together, uh, you know, it's up to anybody to pull pieces that they have concerns with. For myself, uh, just having read the material coming from Upper Thames River Conservation Authority and the memo that was very helpfully put together by Mr. Levin. Um, it's very clear to me that the province needs to slow down on the changes they're talking about making and talk with both municipalities and the conservation authorities more about what they're doing. So I don't think it's a high bar to get over to say, hey, hold on. Uh, that's a lot to be changing all at once. Conservation Authority has some pretty serious concerns about it. Having looked at it just myself, um, the change, just the change of the duty of the members uh, is very concerning to me. Uh, personally, I want the people who are appointed to the Upper Thames Conservation Authority to be looking out for the watershed and to be following the mission of that organization and not be there thinking that they are representative of just the municipality. Uh, I think we have lots of great special purpose bodies like the conservation authorities, uh, even our joint water boards. We have a lot of good municipal cooperation organizations where we have representation appointed from the municipalities, but they work together uh, on a regional basis to get things done, uh, for the residents in this area. And I think having a focus on their mission is actually really important. So it's enough for me to hear from the authority and say, we have some pretty serious concerns. I don't think it's reasonable to make these kind of changes in a timeframe of introduce them November fifth, finalize them December tenth, move on. Um, and I think the fact that we're dealing with it as an emergent motion is itself an indicator that, you know, we just slow this down and have a real conversation about it. Um, I can understand why the province wants to move quickly. You know, we're in a pandemic. They've had, I think, longstanding frustrations with many aspects of the conservation authorities. Uh, I will tell you, this came up in a discussion with Minister York not that long ago. And other folks in our region who are in our watershed have the same kind of concerns about it moving very quickly and what is going on. Um, so I think taking some time is, is enough. I don't need to see a report from staff to know that the province should slow down and, and be cautious about these changes, uh, to consult with the conservation authorities and municipalities, I think is, is appropriate. And if we have the benefit of more time, we can certainly have a more fulsome discussion about what are the pros and cons of these various changes. But getting more time, for me, that threshold has been reached.
Thank you. Councillor Turner.
I thank you, your worship, and thanks to Deputy Mayor Helmer, uh, for those points. I, I agree. Uh, I think what we're looking at is that we've got a very short timeframe. If, uh, this was deferred, uh, and, or referred over to PEC and then, uh, for ratification at council, it would be forty-eight hours before the anticipated, uh, passage of this bill. Now, which wouldn't really give us much opportunity to actually send anything to the province and have them say, well, let's hold on for a second. Um, this, uh, gives us a couple of weeks, uh, of us having filed our concerns. Uh, I, I agree with the, with some of the, uh, the questions. We don't typically do, uh, motions with the, uh, not, uh, a lot of whereas clauses. I think it, the, the motion on its own stands without the whereas clauses. I think we could easily, um, uh, exclude those and just to pass a motion like we normally do, uh, with the, uh, with the, the five points that are identified in the, in councillor Hopkins' motion there. Uh, that would be my recommendation. So I, I urge you to defeat the deferral, um, and, or the referral. And, uh, let's just get this out in front of the province as fast as we can. Uh, I, I, I've raised concerns in the past at the, um, it, I guess, kind of the, the lack of consultation on a lot of, uh, provincial bills, uh, especially like Bill one oh eight and other things that, uh, had the, uh, the commentary portal closed only to have it, uh, the bill receive royal assent the next day. Uh, so it, it didn't really, uh, show much good faith in terms of actually listening to a community commentary. I think it's important that we as, as representatives of our constituencies, um, uh, speak government to government and identify that we too have concerns and, um, and we need to be able to have that as part of a dialogue between the municipality and the province.
Thank you. Councillor Morgan.
Uh, yeah, I don't support the referral. Uh, I, I do think this is, uh, this is emergent and timely. And, uh, I, I think that when I started my first comments, I actually think there's something that all of us can support, uh, here. And that is proper consultation needs to happen. There are concerns that are raised. Whether you agree with every single one of those concerns or not is irrelevant to the fact that, um, they should be properly addressed and, and discussed and, and that requires some time. And given this is attached to a bill that could move very quickly, um, and will move very quickly, uh, I, I think it's timely for us to get that on record as soon as possible. And I think Deputy Mayor Helmer is, is very astute in, if there is a clause that, that you can pull out that you don't want to vote on, you can vote on that separately. But there are some really important pieces here about, um, about the consultation piece and, and expressing our concern with the, not being, not having the concerns fully addressed in, in a proper way. Um, also, I, I'll note, uh, as someone who has asked for resolutions from the FCM, we have done whereas clauses before. They're just really rare. Um, at that point, it was required by FCM to be in a certain format. I'm not sure that's the case here, given it came from the Conservation Authority. So councillor Turner is right, we could just stick with the operative clauses if people have concerns with the whereas's and, and address those. And I think that that would be a reasonable path forward for us to get this done tonight. So I'm against the referral.
Thanks. Uh, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. Um, and thank you to councillor Hopkins for bringing this forward. I, I also note that we received the letter from the Kettle Creek, uh, Conservation Authority as well. And, and councillor Pelosi is our representative on that body. Um, so, uh, I'm, I'm supportive of the motion. I will not be supporting the referral. This is a timely matter. And, and listen, um, I, I would agree that, uh, the current provincial government may have gotten off to a rocky start at the beginning with a lot of, uh, changes being proposed. But I would also say that when, um, municipalities and bodies like AMO, uh, came forward and asked the province to, to pause, take a step back and maybe reconsider the direction or change the direction or amend it slightly, uh, there are many instances where the province, uh, agreed and the province took a step back. And I'm thinking of the changes to public health as, as, as a, as a, as a really, uh, a big example of that. Uh, there were a number of changes that were, uh, proposed to happen retroactively even. Uh, changes to funding, changes to the funding formula, which would have affected the municipalities. And, um, not only did the province, uh, pause a lot of those changes and, and start a very robust consultation process, which has only been paused right now because of the COVID uh, situation. Those consultations will begin again with Mr. Pine going out again to other municipalities. He's already come to London and had consultations with us. So the province is, has been responsive in different situations. When, when bodies, municipalities, AMO have, have pushed back a little bit and asked them to do more consultations, to take our concerns under consideration. And, and I think there is no harm in our asking them to do that in, for this situation. There, uh, these conservation authorities are important structures, important organizations for a municipality like London, who, as councillor Morgan or councillor Hopkins rightly pointed out, we have a river going right through our city. And that, we only have to look back a year ago to see the, the flooding that happened in the city in January, um, that was unprecedented. Uh, so we need to have very strong, uh, agencies like conservation authorities that have the mandate that they have. So I'm not going to support the referral. It does not hurt us to ask. It, it makes, it also, uh, gave me some, um, uh, some comfort to hear that AMO is also, um, on board with, uh, asking the province to take a step back and to do more consultations. So, uh, I'm going to support councillor Hopkins' motion. And I am also supportive of removing the whereas clauses if that's going to help, uh, people have a little bit more comfort with the motion.
Okay, we are dealing with the, uh, amendment. So let's, any other comments or questions about that? Councillor Van Merwe.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I see no harm in getting, uh, more information from staff, uh, what appears to be a timely basis. Um, there's clearly information that's lacking that, uh, we need to make an informed decision. Um, so I, I will support the referral. I think it makes sense.
Thank you. I wonder if I could call on Deputy Mayor Helmer. I understand there may be a speaker on your list.
Uh, there is. It's Mayor Holder. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, colleagues, I'm, uh, I'm challenged by the referral because I think it delays things. I won't support it, but I understand the spirit of it. Because there's a lot that's been, uh, been, uh, put in front of us. And so here's my challenge with what's been, so I won't support the referral because I'd like us to deal with these items. And I've already, it's already been suggested by someone to me that we deal with A through E separately. And those are standalone items. I think the challenge I've got with the whereas clauses is that there are presumptions that I can't confirm. And I will not, uh, go down a road that, uh, that frankly, I do believe. And perhaps I could, uh, just stop myself and ask, uh, councillor Hopkins, because I think this would answer a question for me. Was this, was, was this put together, this resolution by Upper Thames or was this put together by Conservation Ontario? Would you happen to know that?
Yes, I, I do know, uh, the answer to that. And this is coming from the Upper Thames Conservation Authority, the board.
Thank you. That, the whereas's as well as the, sorry, and I don't mean to dwell on this, the whereas's and the resolutions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Noting the concerns that we have coming from, uh, Conservation Ontario.
All right. Noting that, from my standpoint, again, without me being able to verify issues that I thought councillor Squire touched on very thoughtfully about red tape and costs. I don't know that. And, uh, that some of the resolutions that are here, uh, make certain presumptions again that I can't, uh, that I need some support to understand. And I think that the greatest thing that I'm hearing from councillor Morgan and call, pardon me, councillor, uh, Hopkins and others is that more time needs to be done. And I get that. I, I really respect that that's an important process. And it strikes me that the second bullet, that is B, says, says the province of Ontario delay enactment of clauses gets me to where we want to be in terms of really supporting that. Other things, I'm not sure I can personally, uh, confirm at this point. Uh, so with all of that, be, be, because I think there is a great challenge here in terms of understanding this delicate role the conservation authorities, and I'll put plural there because we have three that impact London, uh, and our, and communities across the province. You know, it was interesting, we'll recall last year at AMO in Ottawa, there was a, Ministry York made a comment with regard to, uh, making some adjustments to conservation authorities. And it was palpable, the cheering. I don't know what that means, but, but except that I know there are some struggles. And I think we heard, uh, some comments around, uh, that earlier in, in this debate. So all to say, there are things that frankly, I need to get my head around. And I think honestly, the province should, uh, have greater consultation with conservation authorities. But it also gives us an opportunity as well. So from my standpoint, I'll be voting against the referral. And we are going to be going clause by clause on these issues. So any other comments or questions, colleagues? I see none. So this will be on the referral. We will put the question. Thank you.
Councillor Helmer?
Just waiting for it to come up one sec.
Closing the vote and the motion is lost, five to ten.
Thank you, colleagues. That puts us back to the main motion. But I want to clarify, and perhaps I can ask councillor Hopkins and her secondary councillor Pelosi, there was some question about the whereas's and the like and that we just deal with A through E. And we can vote A through E, but there is that, uh, preface in front of it. And I'd like to know whether, whether you want this to live as it is. But we will be individually voting A through E or whether you wish to take out the whereas's and just go A through E. Can, can I get some direction from the mover on that, please?
Yes, your worship. I am fine with removing the whereas clauses, uh, for clarity moving forward. Putting on the, um, A to E and hoping that my colleagues will support each and every one of these clauses, addressing the concerns that the Upper Thames Conservation Authority has with the changes to bill two two nine. In particular, the clarification and the regulations that is, are needed as well as the timelines to implement the changes that we know are going to be coming forward.
Thank you. Is your secondary in agreement, Ms. Pelosi? Thanks very much. So we'll be dealing with these clauses A through E individually, colleagues?
Uh, your worship, if I may.
Do you have a question with regard to, uh, procedure, councillor Van Holst?
Yeah, yes. I'm hoping to get some direction on where to find clauses A to, to E. I don't seem to be able to see that on the East Grid.
I'll, um, look to the clerk for that.
Uh, through you, Mr. We're just working on it, but it is contained in the emergent motion, which is part of the agenda.
So we're dealing, uh, specifically with A, colleagues, as that comes up.
Councillor Lewis, councillor, excuse me, Slaney, councillor Helmer and councillor Lehman. Closing the vote and the motion carries thirteen to two.
Colleagues, one up would be on the table.
Counselor Helmer and Pelosi in Kailega. Closing the vote, and the motion carries, 15 to 0.
Colleagues, we'll now deal with item C.
Counselor Helmer and Counselor Kailega. Closing the vote, and the motion carries, 10 to 5.
Colleagues, we'll now deal with item D.
Counselor Layman?
This is D.
Counselor Turner?
Yes.
This is D, yes.
Through you, Your Worship. I submitted mine a couple minutes ago. Is it not in yet?
No.
We're just checking, because there are some challenges with the East Grib. I appreciate that. And one of our colleagues around there, or she's got the same issue as well. We're just checking.
Yours is in now. I'm just waiting for Counselor Turner. Closing the vote, and the motion carries, 13 to 2. I apologize again for the problem we're having with the East Grib this evening.
Well, that's not for you to apologize, clerk, but thank you. And now we'll deal
Counselor Lewis, not seeing it. Thank you. Closing the vote, and the motion carries, 10 to 5. The problem is, the system keeps what we call spinning, and we're not sure why that's happening.
Thanks very much. And I'd like to thank Counselor Hopkins, if I might, for bringing this forward to us, so that we could have not only a fulsome debate, but dealing with all of these issues. So our gratitude, thank you for that, Counselor Hopkins. Colleagues, we have a number of bylaws on item 13, and we're going to deal first with first reading of Bill 359 and 367. That will be for introduction, first reading of those bills inclusive. Do I have a mover, please? Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Layman. Thank you very much. We'll call the vote. We'll try to call the vote. Excuse me.
For Counselor's attention, that includes the revised bylaw out of planning. Closing the votes. Sorry.
Sorry, technical difficulty, colleagues. We'll be right back to you.
Motion carries 15 to 0.
Are we good, clerk?
We're good.
All right, we'll let you. Good.
We're in second reading. The first vote carried 15 to 0.
Thank you. We'll look for a mover in secondary or second reading of Bills 359 through 367, acknowledging that we have amended Bill 361, moved by Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Turner. Any discussion?
Counselor Morgan and Counselor Hopkins. Closing the vote, and the motion carries, 15 to 0.
Colleagues, thank you. And now I'll be looking for mover in secondary or third reading and enactment of Bills 359 through 367, acknowledging that Bill 361 has been amended. Do I have a mover, please? Counselor Van Mirberg, and seconded by Counselor Lewis.
Closing the vote, and the motion carries, 15 to 0.
So colleagues, I want to acknowledge the time. It's 6:35, and we have eight items to be dealt with in closed session. Before we do that, I'm advised by the, by those who are wiser than me, that it may be 15, 20 minutes. We don't want to rush democracy, obviously, but accepting that that's the case, I'm at the will of council, whether you would like to carry through and move this through, or whether you would like to take a 30-minute break. Any particular thoughts, Counselor Pelosi?
Carry through.
Carry through. Any other thoughts contrary? I won't put that to a vote then, but what I will look then for is a motion to move into closed session. And before I do that, I will ask, well, as we vote on this, I will ask the clerk to advise what those items are that we are going into closed session to deal with. So I've got a mover for closed session. Who would that be? Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. Let's call the question by hand. So screens on, please. All those in favor?
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I'll look to the clerk just to advise the public what it is that we're dealing with in closed session, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. We're going into closed session for the eight confidential matters that are listed on the public agenda. If you want me to read them out, I can, but they are posted on the public agenda.
Thanks very much. With that, we are going to turn off the screens, and we will be back to report from closed session, pass whatever bills are appropriate.